Cindy Simmons, where are you? Please come forward. I know. We have a resolution of the Harrison County Board of Supervisors congratulating you Cindy Simmons upon your retirement. Whereas after graduating from Harrison Central, you began working for Harrison County in November of nineteen ninety-six. Nearly thirty years of public service for residents of Harrison County. Cindy Simmons has served in the Chancery, Personnel, Beautification, Road and Sand Beach Departments. And throughout her career has worked tirelessly to navigate changes with multiple boards of supervisors, as you can imagine, while maintaining an unwavering commitment to her duties as Director of Harrison County Beautification, Special Project Coordinator for the Road Department, which is, she is really considered, I believe, the backbone of our Sand Beach Department, where she has served as Office Manager since two thousand eleven. Today, whereas Cindy Simmons' commitment to Harrison County and the citizens and the cities of Biloxi, DeArborville, Gulfport, Long Beach, and Pass Christian, as well as their residents, is beyond question. Throughout her many years of service, dedication, and as we all know, great, great work ethic, Cindy has brought great credit to Harrison County. So today it is fitting and appropriate that the county and all of its citizens recognize and sincere give congratulations and grateful appreciation to Cindy Simmons for almost thirty years of steadfast service to Harrison County. So now therefore be resolved, the Harrison County Board of Supervisors, on behalf of our citizens, express our sincerest congratulations and appreciation to you Cindy for nearly thirty years of dedicated service to Harrison County, Mississippi. We will miss you, but it is a well-earned retirement, and she does a lot of volunteer work as well. So congratulations Cindy. Do you want to come up here Cindy?
Oh, yeah. Now this is unusual, I've never been up here.
Here we go.
Thank y'all.
Two, three.
I need a motion to amend the agenda. We'll have a discussion on the offer for the sale of the DeArborville Police Station. Any discussion? All in favor?
She said that she's waiting on receiving the file for that offer. So she went to check her email.
Can't go forward without her anyway.
I think she loved to run.
So Nita, all in favor? Move to item one. I want to recognize Abby Darrow with Audubon Delta and Mississippi State University to discuss placing additional trapping devices in Pass Christian.
Thank you for having me. I want to give a brief presentation on what my proposal is and how things went last year with the trapping efforts. Just to kind of start with a reiteration that Harrison County is extremely important to our lease terms. It supports up to twenty percent of the northern Gulf population of this declining species. They really do well on our manicured beaches, and when things go right, they are very productive here. And historically, kind of the story has been that Highway ninety helps to keep predators away, drowned predators away. However, that started to change several years ago, about twenty twenty, when foxes began to arrive kind of all across the coast, but especially in Pass Christian and Long Beach. And we've seen a sharp decline in the lease term colonies, both the use and the productivity, breeding productivity of these birds in this area. Certainly, foxes have the ability to completely wipe out a colony within a matter of days. It's just not something that the birds can really defend against during the night. And so last year, we sought and received board approval to conduct an initial trapping. One male fox was removed in May of twenty twenty-four by Wildlife Solutions, our contractor. We did continue to see signs of foxes in another area. So we no longer saw this fox in western Pass Christian, but east of the harbor and into west Long Beach, we continued to see signs, as well as catching coyotes in Long Beach. The fox, just the one fox removed, did have a noticeable impact on bird productivity. You can see here that our two colonies in very west Pass Christian had some of our highest fledgling productions on the coast that year, whereas the three to the east of the colony where there was still fox production were among our lowest, with basically no fledglings produced. So this does demonstrate how effective that this tool was, this effort was. So we are seeking permission to continue this trapping effort in two thousand twenty-five. We will once again would like to contract with Wildlife Solutions, who has been a partner for us for a number of years. They will, I were seeking permission to do at least, or up to three trapping sessions, depending on where we're seeing activity of the foxes. You know, once again, these are methods used that are, they do not, the trapping efforts do not harm. It's a leg hold, it does not harm the wildlife, so they can be safely removed. And Wildlife Solutions monitors these locations twenty-four seven. They come to the coast, they're there, checking every night by trained personnel. So these are the proposed trapping locations. The coyote was seen west of Pass Christian Harbor, whereas the fox, the fox locations are east of Pass Christian Harbor. These are proposed trapping locations. And so I would like to thank you for your time and consideration, and I will happy to answer any questions people may have.
No questions here? Any questions?
That animal was ours, not all injured then.
Correct.
Any other questions?
No, no question.
Thank you.
Thank you, glad someone does that kind of work.
Sorry, were you asking the board? Were they asking the board action?
Permission to proceed, is what we are saying.
I make a motion to proceed with what trapping you see as necessary with what you presented here today.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. We'll come back to item three and four at ten o'clock. Consent agenda items five through thirteen.
Motion.
Discussion? All in favor? Three is at ten AM to, I'm sorry, David Hardy with EGH Architects, PA.
Thank you, if I may give just a brief update on the combined Harrison County Health Department and Diversion Center project. So we, as you all know, we looked at more than one location for this particular project, and we now have been doing the research on building that the county procured at fourteen oh fifty-five Seaway Road, location formerly known as Seaway Center, it's about thirty-eight thousand square feet. We've completed a LiDAR scan of that facility and calibrated the plans with the existing conditions, as well, we've been evaluating the existing mechanical systems and facilities. And at this point, we've delivered last week to Michael Whitehead, who's the Director of the State of Mississippi Health Departments, and as well Mo Nogosha, the Director of High Level Mental Health. So those are the two point people that would run the respective programs in the building, that being the Diversion Center and the Health Department. We've requested their concurrence with the plans as presented. For the Health Department, we did a survey of all the existing furniture and their existing facility planned for relocation, and withdrawing that furniture in the plans. Purpose of all that is to make sure that their existing equipment will fit in the new location, and that everybody's had to do the plan. We've yet to hear back from them, they've acknowledged receipt of those plans, but we've yet to hear back from them regarding their concurrence for the plans it proposed. So being that we're wrapping up this phase of the project, our business office contacted me about preparing an invoice for services, and that's when it was noticed that the amendment that we issued on the project included an incorrect fee calculation. So this original project started at Broad Avenue, we're going to renovate an existing facility. And that was the correct fee, because the fee uses a calculation for renovation of a building that adds fifteen percent. And that extra fifteen percent pays for all of the existing condition review, and that's the work that we've just completed. So this amendment that was previously drafted was for the location that we were considering new build on Seaway Road. If you may all recall, we looked at the development commission site. So when, kind of late in last year, it was determined the county was buying the new building, so we revised the amendment to reflect this new location for the combined center. And when that amendment was revised, clerical oversight, they didn't catch the fee revision, because the fee on that project was for a new build, not a renovation. So the clarification request is that the fee would be reflected as on the original contract, which was a renovation fee. So that's the only amendment, but we'd be certainly happy to answer any questions everyone has about the project as we're moving forward. And I still think the previous cost estimates are within range. Just rough order of magnitude, somebody understands, I think the county has somewhere around eighty dollars a square foot in that building, and our estimates are projecting that after renovations would be somewhere between two-ten and two-hundred-and-fifty a square foot, which for a facility that would have envelope upgrades and basically be a serviceable building for the county well into the future, that's a very good value for the taxpayers of Harrison County.
Motion to accept the amendment.
I do have a question real quick then. So we do have an amendment to the agreement that was approved in two thousand twenty-four.
Yes.
So this one, the standard short form agreement, the owner and the architect, should that not be an amendment, or is this?
So the standard form of agreement, short form, was the original contract?
In two thousand twenty-four, right?
Correct, and that was subsequently amended. And that subsequent amendment included a revision to the fee that was based on a new build, not a renovation. And basically, if we struck the fee revision in the amendment, it would then revert to the fee that was in the original contract, and that's, I think, maybe the simplest way clerically to handle it.
How long have you been waiting on a response from the Health Department?
So today would be a week. And I'll certainly follow up with them this week, because that is a critical path to get their feedback, so that we could release our MVP team to... One of the things we noticed on the facility, for example, all the waiting rooms for the Health Department, there's no outside air coming in, it's just recirculation air, and that's not what you want. You got a bunch of sick people in one room. So we would bring outside air, and so that's the big mechanical, that's a big part of our added cost to that building, mechanical services.
You made a motion?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to the consent agenda, items five through thirteen. It's not ten, the tent Murray and Corrigan are together. I have a motion, maybe a second? All right, discussion? All in favor? Order acknowledging receipt of and approving petitions for decreases in the two thousand twenty-four real and personal property rolls as recommended by the tax assessor?
Let me see.
Session, all in favor? Order acknowledging receipt of and approving petitions for increases to the two thousand twenty-four personal property roll as recommended by the tax assessor? Discussion? All in favor? Order acknowledging receipt of and approving petitions for decreases to the two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-three real and personal property rolls as recommended by the tax assessor? Order acknowledging that the attached letter of credit tendered by B-Locks Building LLC to a security for potential damage to the public roadways by its project has expired, and no damages have occurred to Catalogue Road after inspection by the county engineer and road manager. No further assurances or inspections are expected related to this project, and the developer is hereby released from this requirement.
Second discussion, Tim, on that, what, is there any kind of physical assets committed to that, or is it just word of a promise?
It was a letter of credit, you remember, when they were going to put this, it's a, they build container houses, they bring the containers in and put them together as homes or different buildings. As part of the condition permit to allow me to do that, they were required to put up a bond to make sure that it wouldn't damage the roads and bringing in and out. And it was intended, I don't remember the discussion, they thought two years was the time they could see if damage would occur. So that time came up, and they said, no damage has occurred, so they want to be released. The letter of credit, they would be no different than any other taxpayer if they caused damage to the roadways going forward. So the only thing this did was, the letter of credit, if they had damaged the roads, they would have taken the letter of credit. So I think it's appropriate to release it, because that money's tied up in the bank. And it has been a two-year period that they agreed to.
Any other discussion? Have a motion and a second? All in favor? Order approving change order number two, capital construction is recommended by digital engineering, adding float diversion and pumpback trucks to enable sludge removal at the treatment plant where the pipe connection will be made. Change order adds six thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars to the total contract price.
Motion.
Discussion? All in favor? Order accepting and approving the attached personal guarantee regarding completion of Hatton Manor infrastructure items, and authorize the board president to execute the second. Discussion?
That's, that's, that was the question that I really meant to ask on this one. What is, what is backing up that guarantee?
Well, the people, they put up bonds. This was a, if you recall, we've been having problems where you have subdivisions that are built, the roads never get accepted, bonds are put up, which are totally inadequate by the time the roads need to be done. So you're left with a corporation that has no assets to go after, try to finish the roads. So we came up with this personal guarantee. Anytime, my recommendation, Jack and I have talked about it, anytime you have a corporate entity like an LLC or a corporation to require individuals in the corporate entity to guarantee performance of the corporation, that way you have personal liability for them doing the roads and fixing the roads at the end. So you have somebody to go after unless they die or something, nothing to do about that. I still think, and Jackie, the bonds are, she can speak to it, they're increasing the bonds, but it's still unfortunately not enough.
But there's no commitment to any assets behind that personal guarantee?
No, no. You just have to look at the individuals to see if they have assets. In this case, you've got Mr. Hardin, Mr. Neesley, both have assets. So it's just another way of trying to force the individuals to be responsible for walking away, because you've got an LLC that doesn't own anything. So something that going forward, we ought to do on all these subdivisions where they're corporate entities. Because you've got a real problem out there with at least five subdivisions I know of off the top of my head, where the roads have never been accepted, and never put the final layers of asphalt, and some of them, the entities are gone. One in particular, I think, the individuals have died also, so you're out of luck anyway. It's just another method to try to have them have responsibility where they just can't walk away.
But there's no commitment to an amount, a guaranteed amount, or anything like that, I'm just worried, I'm just...
There's a bond here.
How would we enforce it?
There's a bond on this, this particular subdivision has bonds in addition to the personal guarantee.
In addition to?
Right, so you have the bonds that are normally done, the personal guarantee just makes the individuals responsible. So they just won't walk away, I mean, we've got one particular subdivision, I think it may be discussed today, that you've got a corporate entity there, but what is it worth to force them to fix the roads?
But they sign a document.
Right, this would make the individuals personally liable if they don't, if the corporate entity does not finish the roads. To me, it's just another step to try to make, have somebody having responsibility, not they don't just walk away from it. Just another way to try to handle it.
And in this, in this specific situation, these guys were basically investors in this, and the person that was doing everything walked away. And so they agreed to do this, just to be able to go forward, because they had so much money tied up in it.
These are both people I wouldn't worry about anyways, but...
We know them.
But it's a start, because you do have subdivisions out there to be developed. I think the board ought to require this on any time.
I agree, we're doing it right now, and one in my ward that's...
And you'll remember, when you approved the subdivision, it was subject to them executing this personal guarantee.
Right, we've had problems in the past.
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Should we go ahead and make a motion that this is going to be a future practice?
I think Jackie's working on something.
I think you did actually, minutes before, I think you made, did have a motion to make this a regular practice.
Jackie is working on trying to go through the code, because what's happened over the years is, there's been changes made, but they've never been really incorporated into one document, one, so you've got all kinds of...
It's sad about this thing of people...
We can make sure that it's including everything that Donovan's doing.
Right, the, I mean, when this was approved, the board authorized this to be as part of the condition permit.
All right. Did we vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, what's that?
You have a motion.
Okay, all in favor? Order extending the existing contract for debris monitoring services with Tetra Tech for a period of one year in accordance with contract renewal conditions. Is this, so we're just extending? The contract allows us just to extend without going up to bid?
The contract does allow for one-year extensions. If both parties agree, the contractor has the opportunity to request an increase if costs escalate, and they did not do so this time, so it would be existing costs in accordance with the forward year.
Okay, this is your recommendation to do them?
Yes.
Just curious, in that contract, that monitoring contract, does there assume any liability if the contractor, if the contractor, for example, defrauls the government, a fee man anyway? We had that experience with Katrina.
They would be responsible if they don't correctly monitor and report it, but I don't believe that they would accept the liability of someone else committing fraud. It's their job to monitor and report it, and if they miss it, then they're on it as well.
Well, if they're monitoring it, they should make sure that it's being monitored properly.
Right, right, so I mean, they're responsible for their monitoring responsibility.
The reason that I asked you that is in the previous contract, Tim, you remember this, they had a specific thing in there that they weren't responsible, I don't recall the exactly what they said, but bottom line is, if there was a mistake or they messed up in the month, they weren't responsible for it. Well, that's what we paying them for, to make sure that it's done properly. I just want to make sure in the contract, there's no out for.
I'll, I'll...
I wish you would, I wish you would check that contract, because we got messed over.
I want to say we even brought that up when we approved the contract initially.
I think I did, and I want to make sure that that's... I mean, you pay somebody, you monitor it, when you monitor, when it's all messed up, and they come back and say, well, we're not responsible for that, we won't follow.
It wasn't really the contractor, it was FEMA that was causing the problem there, if you remember.
Well...
Didn't matter what you said to them.
There was some issues too with the monitoring, should have been able to verify it.
I think they went back, as I recall, though, and tracked every single, you remember, they GPSed every single stump, and the people wouldn't listen to it, was the problem. That's the strangest of folks. Hopefully they're being dodged.
Is this being tabled?
Are you wanting to table this?
No, 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 I just...
All right, any other discussion? All in favor? Item twenty-one, order concurring with the road manager on employment as listed on file with the payroll clerk and human resources.
Motion.
Discussion? All in favor? Order acknowledging receipt of a word letter for the CSX Community Service Grant for CSX Transportation in the amount of forty-five hundred dollars.
Motion.
This is for a, a Moby Mat for Sand Beach. First and the second, discussion? Order authorizing and approving the issuance of a beach event permit as listed?
Motion.
Discussion? All in favor? Zoning administrator?
Good morning. Zoning recommends concurring with planning commission's recommendations for cases twenty-four through twenty-nine.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Order authorizing and approving the purchase of the most updated compliance required in Mississippi and federal employment labor law posters for Harrison County Human Resources in the amount of one hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-one cents.
Motion.
Discussion? All in favor? Order concurring with the county administrator on employment as listed on file with the payroll clerk and human resources department. Discussion? All in favor? Order accepting the lowest and best bid from Law and Machinery in the amount of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars for a total per, for a total amount of five hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars for the purchase of two Komatsu D fifty-one PX twenty-four bulldozers.
Motion.
Discussion?
Tim, these are the two that you needed, these are the two that you...
All in favor? Order accepting the lowest and best bid from Ray Weaver Mechanical Contractors in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars plus eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars to include the option of York Chiller with only a ninety-day lead time total of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars.
Motion.
Discussion? All in favor? Order authorizing advertisement for bid request for a new concession stand building at Isaiah Frederick's Ball Field.
Motion.
Discussion? All in favor? Order authorizing and approving the selection committee recommendation of federal engineering as the lowest and best proposal for professional radio communications consulting services, with services beginning at the issuance of contract and ending January third, two thousand twenty-eight, and authorizing the board president to execute.
Motion.
Discussion?
The only thing is, as soon as we can, we need to get them here to either have a workshop or discussions about those. We need to get that, that done, we need to get this radio system deal done.
Okay. All in favor? Order authorizing and approving the purchase of a desk for election commission at a cost of four thousand twenty-five dollars from Business Furniture Services.
Motion.
Discussion?
There's only one quote we have back up with it. I wish I'd make sure that you get the second quotes in the back up, so we can see what...
What kind of desk costs four thousand dollars?
I will say this, that just because it's a state contract price, that means the best deal you can get, you can get one.
Is this just a normal desk? Four thousand dollars?
My kind of desk.
All right. Any other discussion? Four thousand's a lot for a desk.
If I'm not mistaken, I think...
Unless it's some kind of special desk.
If a Hutch, or Denz, or Antes.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor? Oh, ten o'clock, all right. We'll recognize Steve O'Meara. So these events were the negotiable note, about ten million dollars. This bill is from Renaissance Bank, interest rate of five point two five.
Renaissance.
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 Renaissance, what was it, man?
Five point two five percent. This bid is from. Their bid is five point seven eight percent.
Five point seven eight.
This bid is from.
That was Cadence.
Cadence was second, five point seven eight. Was second. Renaissance was first. The third one is, uh, Regis Bank, for three point one seven percent. Last one we have. Is from Truss Mart with a rate of three point seven nine percent.
Three point what?
Seven nine. Seven nine percent. Next one bids we received and not seeing any conditions added that, uh, we would object to. We recommend, recommend the board accept the bid of Regis Bank at three point one seven percent for five years.
I don't know.
Okay, um, do we need to read that resolution?
Yes, we have a resolution that, um, accepts, number one says that you published your notice, which you did, um, accepts, uh, the winning and lowest proposal off of, in the municipal advisor and sets the terms for itself to make. So you'll need a motion and a second for the resolution, which will approve all of this.
Take a motion to, to have the resolution on.
Okay, so is this number four, is what this, that, that resolution is? Okay, all right, seconds. We have a first and a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And to make sure that was last.
Do we need a motion to? Except the bid that, uh, you agree?
You made the motion, right? Motion was June.
So we're going to vote.
Yeah, Ladd, our agenda.
Black, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Say that again?
Resolution.
Do a manual.
Accepting the bid.
You'll read it just in case?
No, no, I don't have a problem with the resolution. Resolution, the bid is not the bid.
Tim, do we need a?
He has a question.
Do we need a motion to accept the bid first and then, then do resolution from the other?
I think the resolution covers.
The resolution covers.
Resolution covers there.
Resolution covers all of it.
Could do.
They're going to fill in the blanks now.
Yeah, we're going to fill in with all the, um.
Look at Trey smiling back there.
And he's saying, Trey.
Yep, in the new beach, old buddy.
Thank you. To everyone.
Hi, y'all.
Yes, thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Thirty-seven?
Yep.
All right, number thirty-seven, order approving the low quote from Samuel V Day Construction for the complete construction of two pickleball courts at the Harrison County Fairgrounds, a total cost of fifty-one thousand, one hundred dollars.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order authorizing the advertisement for bids for beach outfall improvement, go Mason Project.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing advertisement for requests for proposals for the following projects as requested by the county administrator.
Motion.
Second.
Second discussion. As far, I don't know about the, uh, patio equipment, but, uh, we replaced furniture not too long ago with a court.
Some of them.
Yeah, some of them. The same change of court, but not that work.
We just replaced some of the locks eventually. Oh, we didn't, uh.
A couple of years ago, I think we replaced some up here.
There might have been some, but there's, I, I did a walk through with, um, Angela a while back and there's, there's some of it, which is.
Need to replace.
Nineteen hundreds, early, uh, early nineteen hundreds.
Art.
It's.
Not committing, we do all ask for proposals, say, what's to do? Then wait back to see what.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Order authorizing advertisement for requests for qualifications to provide professional engineering services for the Harrison County Sand Beach Broad Boardwalk Project.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order approving the low quote from Daniel's Roofing Solutions for the roof replacement concession stand at Social Lizanna Ball Field, total cost of sixty-three hundred dollars.
Motion.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order accepting low quote purchase of Orion Junior Side Cutter eighteen inches from Lads for Harrison County Parks and Rec in the amount of six thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Sure, hey?
My turn. Uh, total inmate count is seven hundred ninety-two, one hundred and seventy-one of those are state inmates, sixty-eight of those are ready to go. Got ten federal inmates, nineteen juveniles at the detention center, eighteen at juvenile detention, seventeen of those are Harrison County and one is Hancock. Um, and while I have a floor, um, I received a call from one of my guys Friday and, uh, couple nights last week, he went out to the fairgrounds and, um, found somebody in the shower, taking showers out there, somebody apparently that was homeless or living out of a car or whatnot. He called me asking what time the fairgrounds closed and I said, to my knowledge, there is no closing time. Um, this deputy came from Hancock County and I guess they ran into the same problems at the Hancock County Arena and they put some, whatever closing hours on it because they ended up starting finding syringes and different par, drug paraphernalia out there, so. I, what I would like the board to do is to put some type of signage out there, some type of closing time for the parks or for the fairgrounds, so when my guys go out there, you know, uh, there's no confusion about what time, you know, the place needs to be shut down.
I agree, I've had a lot of calls from neighbors saying homeless people sleeping in the dog park, even taking a bath in the dog bath once, so. Um, I think unless they're renting it, so I think Greg's staff could get you each week the RV license plates maybe, so y'all know who is supposed to be there. Uh, would y'all say nine o'clock is a reasonable time unless you rented it, obviously? What do y'all think?
I mean, if nothing's going on out there, dark, probably not.
Well, I mean, yeah, with, with the time now, it's going to be.
What shower, do you know what shower?
I didn't ask, yeah, I guess there's a, there's a shower house or something.
Right.
Out there underneath the marine, the arena, maybe, uh, where the bathrooms are.
Yeah, the bathrooms out there have showers. There's the bathroom, the ba, there's bathhouses, there's two or three.
I mean, if there's not a.
Yeah, but one, one of the individuals said he had permission from the board and it was, you know, there's, there's no way to verify that, I don't know, but if.
That's what I would say.
Yeah, that's what I would say, so I don't, just so things don't get out of hand out there, I, I would. I would like for y'all to put some, like, of, of closing time out there.
Is that just something Greg can, and?
Just put it out there.
We don't necessarily have.
If we make the motion, then we'll put signage everywhere and then people will realize not to be out there hanging out in the arenas too. We've had calls of people partying in the arenas late at night.
I would, I think that it can, I mean, I think.
Will that affect people that want to go out and, and maybe use the facility?
There's gates on both sides, isn't there? On the north and the south side, but even so, if there's signage out there, ain't nobody, nobody has business being out there after a certain time.
Right.
Will do the barrel races, anybody use the, the covered arena during that time? Because if they do, then that would affect them.
Yeah.
That would affect them because you can't, you can't choose who you're, who you're saying can stay at nine o'clock.
But they would be actively riding. They would be actively riding.
And I guess that it would have to be the, the officer's judgment at that point, after nine o'clock.
But they have permission to do that, right?
Well, it's open to the county.
It's open, yeah, it's open to the.
They're not taking shots. Right.
Okay, so the people that go out there and use the arena, they don't have to call anybody and get, say, hey, we're going to be out there?
No, I don't think so, I think they, they just utilize it as that is needed.
So like, just for, for example, the, uh, the sheriff's farm, the county farm, people are allowed to fish out there, but they have to call the sheriff's office and make sure that there's nothing going on and it's okay for them to do the, they can't just show up out there and, and start fishing, so. I mean, I'm not saying that y'all need to do that, but that's how.
No, I think we do.
That's how.
I, I think we do. Because if someone's out riding horses at eleven o'clock at night, I mean, they can do it all day, I think it's reasonable to put a set time.
I think a reasonable time would be perfect, but.
I've had people tell me if you learned the arena drinking and partying until one, two in the morning and I don't care who it is, it's not a pet.
Right.
You gotta decide what you want to do, you're gonna just clock.
Yeah, we need.
Work and just something similar. Nine PM, whatever it is, until six AM.
Yeah, so I, I'm going to leave that up to y'all, I, I'm, you know, I, I would just recommend that, so things don't get out of hand out there.
Is that something that we can ask Greg, do a little bit of research on and see what, is nine too early, too late? Um, I would hate to just shut someone out because of that issue.
Yeah, I think if, um.
No, go ahead.
I think we say nine o'clock and then horse riders can get permission, you know, just make a phone call, say they're going to be out riding, that way you can clear all that up.
Mm-hmm.
Because then at nine, you can't be out there without permission.
After nine, you have to make a phone call.
Right. Then Greg can kind of line that up, who, who needs to be called.
Careful what you're going to do, y'all going, if you're just closing it where the sheriff can say you got to leave, that's one thing. If the sheriff is going to be authorized to charge somebody with trespass, board is going to have to adopt an ordinance and establish criminal penalties for that.
We got to make sure that our language is right too legally.
And if you're just going to close it, then the board has the authority just to say at nine PM, it's closed until six AM. And the sheriff would be able to tell anybody out there to leave if they didn't have permission. The exact structure of whoever's going to give the permission. But if you're going to talk about charging somebody criminally with trespass on public property, we can start getting to the.
Slippery slope.
Well, you, the board can adopt an ordinance. If you want to. Make a criminal penalty, but don't think you can enforce the state trespass laws on, on property. The board has a right to control, like parking around the courthouse is no different than that.
I mean, I would just say that, you know, let's, let's just put a closing time on it and if it comes an issue, then we'll talk about it again as far as doing an ordinance.
Do we need to talk to Greg to find out what the best time for that is or, um, maybe put this on the agenda for?
For next week.
Next week? Anything else? Yep. Number forty-four, order authorizing and approving payment in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-four cents to the city of Long Beach for the purchase of one two thousand twenty-four Ford Explorer SUV.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order authorizing the replenishment of the transport petty cash in the name of Christian Oates in the amount of three thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order authorizing and approving the replenishment of the training petty cash fund in the name of Brandon Hendry in the amount of two thousand, four hundred and sixty-six.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order approving the low quote purchase from Dana Safety Supply in the amount of seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-four cents for a K nine vehicle insert.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order accepting a quote from Floor Company for purchase and installation of new flooring at the Harrison County Law Enforcement Training Academy at a cost of two thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-six cents.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order retiring asset two six four zero one K nine Zico for health reasons and authorizing inventory control clerk to remove same firm inventory.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order rescinding the below order previously approved on October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, item number thirty-six, file number twenty-four dash four three nine eight.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order acknowledging a receipt of awards letter for Tylen's Grant Award, grant number FY twenty-five dash M nine 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 dash two six in the amount of a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order approving the low quote purchase from Performance Tire and Wheel in the amount of eleven thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-five cents to replace the engine on the two thousand nineteen Dodge Ram twenty-five hundred.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Number fifty-three, order approving travel as listed.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order authorizing the disposal of assets per the attached list.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order correcting the inventory and adding back an item still in use that was previously listed as disposed of.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order authorizing county administrator to seek appraisals for listed properties to establish values for insurance coverage.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order authorizing reimbursement to the sheriff's office account.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order authorizing re, reimbursement to the road fund account.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order authorizing and approving the addition of Jessica Darrell, Cynthia Amy and Laney Newell to the list of assistant receiving clerks.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order approving payment of claims listed.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order concurring with and approving the Sixteenth Section Public School Trust Lands Residential Lease Agreement between Biloxi Public Schools and Kyle and Don Ellis and authorizing the board president to execute.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order concurring with and approving the Sixteenth Section Public School Trust Lands Residential Lease Agreement between Biloxi Public Schools and Rick O Stewart and Cynthia Stewart.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Number sixty-three, order authorizing and approving payment in the amount of ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars to the U S Army Corps of Engineers to fulfill Harrison County's cost share requirements per design agreement for the Coast White Beach Doom Ecosystem Restoration Project approved in two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order authorizing and approving Chancery Clerk to open a standalone checking account for funds to be received as a result of withdrawal by stone in Hancock Counties and the subsequent winding down of current services at Region thirteen.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Number sixty-five, order approving payment of the following claims.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order rescinding agenda item number eighty-four, file ID number twenty-five dash oh one eight three adopted February third, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order acknowledging receipt of certificate of approval of the Mississippi Department of Revenue approving the real and personal asset roles of the first and second judicial districts of Harrison County, Mississippi for two thousand twenty-four.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order acknowledging receipt of orders from the Eighth Chancery Court District setting salary for official court reporters Jill Cox and Adley Seymour, Shirley Ann Edwards and Tracy G. Bertrand effective July twelfth, first, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order authorizing and approving the fifth grade class of Saint James Catholic School to participate. Order authorizing and approving the fifth grade class of Saint James Catholic School to participate in an educational tour on April eleventh, including visits to the county courthouse and its associated departments, the Sand Beach Department and Jones Park. Motion. Second. Discussion?
Uh, I love that you're gonna have the big equipment out there, but we just have to be sure the children aren't climbing on it.
They, they pulled back on that.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, but they're gonna go to the police department, the fire department.
Perfect.
Did we vote? All in favor?
Yeah.
They're not coming here, Rocky?
They're coming to the courthouse, then Guppo T D and Guppo Fire Department, not just the park.
So we need to move Jones Park.
Correct. Sand Beach. And Sand Beach.
And Sand Beach.
All in favor? Order accepting blue ribbon committee member resignation of Deborah Davis and appointing Lauren Killen.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Order authorizing and approving the use of county tent and chairs to Mississippi Veteran Affairs for an event held on April eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, with the setup to be handled by the Parks and Recreation Department. Motion. Second. Discussion?
Can we add to that, advertise county resources?
Okay. Number seventy-one?
Yeah, number seventy-one is necessary to, necessary to advertise the resources of the county.
Okay. Need a motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
Discussion?
And they can put up a sign or something for it to go.
And this is Friday, everybody's invited to this at two o'clock, it's for the ribbon cutting of the, um, the Veterans Affairs Home of the Traditions. All in favor? Order authorizing and approving the cancellation and sale of property located at one seven zero eight nine Highway fifty-three Gulfport and approving the forfeiture of the one thousand earnest money by the proposed buyer. Motion. Second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Order of the Harrison County Board of Supervisors awarding bid contract for Haley Road Bridge Replacement Project number L S B P dash twenty-four, Harrison County, Mississippi, the Key LLC being the low bidder in the amount of four hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars. Motion. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Order of the Harrison County Board of Supervisors awarding bid contract for F Taylor Road Bridge Replacement Project number L S B P dash twenty-four nineteen, Harrison County, Mississippi, the Beacon Construction LLC being the low bidder in the amount of five hundred eighty-four thousand, eighty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. Motion. Discussion? All in favor? Order concurring with and approving the resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission and approving the granting of Freeport Warehouse License to operate a Freeport Warehouse for a period of five years as authorized by Mississippi law. Motion. Second. Discussion?
On, on the, uh, Freeport, don't they have to ship fifty, fifty plus percent on the application? Bill, I don't know if maybe it's a mistake on the application, if I read it right. They had dedicated that fifty-two percent of their property was staying in Mississippi.
Bringing your expert witness.
Did I just read that, Brad?
No, um, that's right. We ran it by Robert too with the county, because it came to the county first, and then they sent it back to us. And the list they provided, they were shipping fifty percent out of state.
Okay, so that was wrong? The backup we had was wrong?
I think so.
Because I saw fifty-two percent, I thought it had to be less. It had to be fifty-two percent, they were saying was staying in the state, but it has to be going out of state. Okay.
We, we triple-checked this one because of who they are, where they are, and what they do, and Robert and Randy came up with the determination that they qualify.
Okay.
When you say Robert with the county?
Cessano.
Cessano, okay.
And they, um, manufactured this through the, um, these hoses and ceilings and gaskets for the chemical industry and, um, the automotive industry, but they did quite a fact, because I was questioning a bunch of things on this.
Okay. I just had that back.
And they're gonna party for their application, but we appreciate y'all getting on the agenda, so we can get it through.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Order concurring with and approving the resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission authorizing and approving the sale of approximately twenty acres of real property as more particularly described in Exhibit A attached to said resolution to Corex Gulfport Propco LLC in accordance with the purchase and sell agreement attached as Exhibit B. Motion. Second. Discussion?
Just so y'all know, this is formerly known as Project Helio, so now it's Corex, and it's the freezer project tied to the Ford Gulfport.
Moving forward. All right. Any discussion? All in favor? Number seventy-seven, order concurring with and approving the resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission rescending prior resolution, authorizing and approving the lease agreement with option to purchase for the lease of approximately one acre of real property to Maritime Development Center LLC, file number ID twenty-five dash O T one, O two one four. Motion. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Order concurring with and approving the resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission authorizing and approving the sale of approximately two point five five acres of real property as more particularly described in Exhibit A attached to said resolution to Maritime Development Center LLC in accordance with the real estate purchase offer attached as Exhibit B. Motion. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Order authorizing the opening of a checking account under the name of Region thirteen Commission for mental health, mental retardation, doing businesses of Gulf Coast mental health, and for related purposes. Motion. Second. Discussion? Do we know the total on that? Do we ever get a total?
We do.
Okay. I didn't know, one time there was back and forth about.
The checks are right there. I, in one of the hundred and forty.
Okay, as long as, as long as we have.
We got checks.
Just wanted to show that.
On the record, I'm gonna check.
I think the checking account has about three hundred and some dollars in it.
No, there's a check in there for about seven hundred and ninety that we're gonna transfer into this account.
I mean, how much is he taking some out of that particular one though?
Hundred and forty-nine thousand.
No, seven hundred and ninety-nine.
I got you. Yeah, that check, that check is one forty-nine.
Another check is seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
That is the check that will go into the, uh, account number seven, the seventy, the order seventy-nine. The seven hundred and ninety-nine, ninety dollars will go into that account. And the hundred and forty will go into the county.
Into what?
Well, they're all the county, I'm sorry.
A hundred and forty?
A hundred and forty.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yes. And you'd already gotten three, three hundreds something.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion?
And just so the board knows, we're leaving Region thirteen, they're just hanging there until decisions made about. If you should decide we do it.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Number eighty, order approving the lease of a land deed of trust for real property located at one four five two four Indian Trail Circle, Biloxi, Mississippi, three nine five forty-two. Motion. Second. Discussion?
Just so y'all know, this is an old program where they have grants, if you've got a, gave property a grant to them and if they stayed on the property for five years, then the grant's forgiven. So this is an old one that some lawyer family had never been canceled, not some lawyer Mike McDermott. And canceled it, so he asked for it to be canceled, it should be canceled.
Okay, all in favor? Order authorizing the board president to sign and execute the following S B two four six eight memorandums of understanding, additional forms, and authorizing the establishment of new bank accounts for each project in accordance with the D F A requirements. Motion. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Order authorizing compromise and settlement of property damage claims in the amount of three thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-four cents to Progressive Mount Laurel Assurance Company from the tort account arising from an accident involving the I T department at the intersection of Highway ninety and Boulevard on October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four as recommended by the county's adjuster and attorney. Motion. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Order approving the service agreement between Harrison County and the Mississippi Security Police. Motion. Second. Discussion? Did, did we establish the back and forth on what, so it's in there? It's pretty, it's clear?
It is clear.
Almost crystal?
Almost crystal.
And about the, about the maintenance that we've all been paying for that was supposed to be done, is that crystal clear?
Yes, man, the only thing they would not agree to was the fluorescent light bulbs.
Okay.
There's, there's an issue with disposal of them.
That's correct.
It's a habit.
Well, we have the Harrison County Council's waste disposal site in case they didn't know.
Thank you. All in favor? Order approving the waiver of rental fees for use of the West Harrison Civic Center by the J W Randolph Educational, Cultural, and Heritage Council to host a Black history program on February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-six.
Motion. Second.
That also advertising county resources just to cover.
Okay. Motion and second?
Could you use the West Harrison Civic Center?
Well, Ben Jonathan, right?
Okay.
All in favor of this?
Oh, was it S B? I'm sorry, S B.
Yes, oh, S B.
Everybody good on that? Okay. Order approving the memorandum of agreement between Harrison County, Gulfport Highlands Development, Gulfport Highlands Office Site, Gulfport Highlands Retail, Gulfport Highlands Retail Two LLC, and the Mississippi Development Authority Disaster Recovery Division. Motion. Second.
Second discussion, Tim, just, just for personal interest. This, this agreement doesn't require them to meet any specific goals anymore, other than, or does it?
Well, I'll let Trish speak to the details.
It's more of a requirement of reporting now rather than meeting specific goals.
Yes, sir, but it does not absolve them of their prior commitment. So they're, they're, they've met their, what we call employment numbers. They have not met their overall employment numbers that they committed to, or their overall investment.
But there's no conditions that they're gonna, as, as when I read that, after a period of so many years of reporting, when, what happened?
Well, this is really the agreement, correct me if I'm wrong, is to try to satisfy M D A and feds. That's the purpose of the agreement.
They're trying to close it out.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
The agreement is to try to make, where they can close it on the federal level. It doesn't change the commitments, Highlands.
Technically, they still supposed to meet those conditions.
It satisfies the M D A and the federal government to, to close out the grant.
But to be perfectly candid, they will, in all likelihood, not meet their commitment. I was, I, I mean, because the question they put forth was, well, why do we got to continue to do the reporting? So, if you get the reporting, you're gonna be, I, I don't even think you're gonna do that. But there, this will get the county to where they say they will close it out for HUD purposes, so.
So HUD won't be coming back.
Thank you. All in favor of this? Discuss approval for the placement of a state historical marker at Finley Cemetery.
And I'm sorry I don't have it in front of me. Is the resident here who's requesting that we name Finley in my district cemetery? Basically, we have a resident who wants to get it named state historical marker. Tricia and I spoke. She doesn't think it necessarily rises to that level. They sent another documentation saying that a pretty well-known woman at the time in the early nineteen hundreds was buried there, and maybe I'll get y'all more information, and we'll discuss it next week, and I'll invite the resident. Tricia said it's something the resident should do on their own unilaterally, that it's not something the board would apply to the state for a historic marker, and we told the resident that, so I'll bring no action today, but I'll maybe get them one day.
Number eighty-seven, order authorizing expenditures as listed as necessary to advertise and bring in the favorable notice, opportunities, possibilities, resources of Harrison County, Mississippi. Motion. Second. Discussion? I have a question. We've talked about this before on every one of these. It has the district and the supervisor's name listed that it's coming from, and... Not necessary. It is. That's, we're not allowed to do this.
Well, we're not allowed to.
Shouldn't be seen without.
Advertise for a single supervisor, like if we put a sign.
We, we had this discussion several meetings ago, and that, that can't be listed like that.
I think what you might be doing, I don't know.
I think you're just.
They're making the request to you.
I, I don't think it's improper on the agenda to identify from which district the request is coming from.
Right.
It's improper for, let's say you put a sign out there and it says Nathan Barrett, District Four, maybe this contribution, that's improper.
Okay, what's improper, though, is if you scroll down to number G, it says District Five Barrett, two thousand, District One Quavis, two thousand. That, that can't be listed like that.
Do you wanna remove them all?
I, I mean, it can say what district's it in, but I mean, it can't be broke down like that. We're not, um...
Right, you're not a district, you're not a city.
That's like a unit system.
I assume that's being paid over the escrow account.
Out of, out of the one esc, yes.
Out of the one escrow?
It's all together.
The one escrow.
It gets to be this, because we call it an escrow account, it has this concept that y'all each have an account.
But we don't.
That is not escrow account. An escrow account is a line item in the budget that gives each district basically a discretionary fund. But everything is still approved by the board leaders, the auditors. They literally thought that you each had a checking account, you're writing checks out of it.
This, the way this is listed, we could get, this could be a, a red flag.
It raises a question to them, but we've been through that before. It's probably not a good idea to do it that way.
So I'd like to motion, make a motion just to, um, list what district this is in, but remove any amounts or the supervisors' names. Second. So I'm making amend, amend this item and all the, um...
To leave the district, just not the name.
Just the district.
You have to keep the amount, so we know we wrote it.
Well, the total amount, though, not, not individual amounts from a district.
Your, your motion is to change the verbiage, not necessarily approve the project.
Yeah, not to change the, they'll just change the verbiage, removing supervisors' names and amounts, and just list the district. Or districts that, that it's in.
Even like when you do projects, you can't have, like, if it's in your district, you have all five supervisors listed, but you can't have the supervisor, like, you used to have one supervisor's name, but they said, no, you can't do. At some point in time, they had the supervisor's district that name was larger than the other supervisor's.
It was in red. It was in red.
Well, no, the red's okay, actually. The color's okay. You can't have it different size. We asked about the red.
Really?
I don't think we got that in writing, but.
When you go look at a road, it used to be like that. Do I have to worry about putting my name on anything? This is the county, it's not mine. So we're good on that? All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
No.
Before we...
And he's, he's gonna be a no.
He's a yes on changing.
All the changes.
No problem.
Yeah, but he's a no.
Yeah, we'll make sure that we have a right.
So you're gonna vote on what? Yes.
Yeah, we do.
Can you go back to item forty-one?
Well, I'm sorry, one more thing on procedure. If someone sends an email to you requesting stuff, Nathan, because you're president this year, oh, let me rephrase that. If Marlon votes no on things, does that mean the money doesn't come from him at all, or it's all from one account? Because there's confusion there too, and I'm asking to educate myself.
I'm not sure what you're saying.
Would it come, if it's in his district, if it comes from his district, does his allocation from that one account go to that if he votes no? Or does it just split among the others that just did this?
Generally, it probably come from the general fund as opposed to any account.
So you said it's one escrow account, so would even, like, just when they text me or we call each other, hey, would you wanna pitch in for this?
Yeah.
And we say yes. Does it come from one account, or is it deducted from each of our?
We don't know what the board says.
See, it's one account. I know, but this is the first time I've heard you say this.
It's not one account.
It's always been, do you want, how much do you wanna pitch in on this? So that would be wonderful not to deal with. If we approve, yes.
From that one account.
I don't care either way, I just wanna know.
It gets confusing because people keep calling it an account. It's really not an account. It is a line item in the budget. It's issued by the district, one hundred thousand dollars, which is not committed to any specific project or anything. It's a discretionary fund, and we went through this argument with the auditors, because they thought literally it was a checking account. It's, it's a line item in the budget. It tells you you have a hundred thousand dollars to spend on whatever the board approves. It doesn't mean that supervisor need to spend.
The property has been for sale for some time. We do have an, an offer that came in late Friday, uh, one hundred and seventy thousand, closed July second.
I'm sorry, what did it appraise for?
Hmm, I wanna say three hundred, I'm gonna have to pull that, but the building is in bad shape, it is in bad shape.
So the appraisal should be the current shape it's in?
Correct, I don't think we have a current appraisal list from.
I think what we've done is, this has been advertised at least twice, that I recall, first time it was, even though, I think the appraisal was in the three to three fifty range initially.
Okay.
We advertised it for bid, the highest offer was a hundred and fifty thousand.
That's right.
And then that was not accepted by the county within re-advertising, and now you're getting these, so the appraisal is probably not correct, it's a willing seller, really buyer, and you've got two offers, and two separate advertisements, both in the hundred fifty range, it's probably three hundred. The appraisal was probably not.
How recent was the appraisal?
It was a couple of years ago, I wanna say it was about three years ago, right before the, they moved out right after.
Yeah, and since they moved, there was a, a bunch of homeless people living in there, and they basically destroyed the inside of that building.
We're still having a struggle.
I'm certainly in favor of selling the building, but unless we get a current, what's today is it worth giving up something that's worth three hundred thousand for a hundred and seventy? I wouldn't do for my family or my real estate business, and Ashes May, it would be nice to know what the current conditions actually are, or the actual appraisal, does that make sense?
Yes, you can agree to, you can accept the deal subject to an appraisal. Why, it's an appraisal, let's make sure it's worth, update the appraisal or get a new appraisal.
Yeah, I hate to slow it down, but would y'all be in favor of a current appraisal?
So, so basically, make a motion to accept?
The agreement subject to.
Subject to an appraisal, but what if it comes back, you know?
Comes back less, they gonna wanna move it.
Yeah. I mean, the building, is it?
You think it'll come back less than one seventy?
I don't know.
I mean, the real, the length of the wall.
What you, what you do know is you've twice advertised this piece of property for sale, and twice offers have been in the one fifty to one seventy range, and so your, your appraisal is probably high.
I'd say it's, it's worth whatever, what, what someone's willing to pay for.
That's right.
Well, would you give a car away for much less than it's worth, just because you haven't sold it twice?
If you wanna get another appraisal, make sure, there's nothing wrong with that, make sure that price.
So what's the percentage that we say, okay, we're not selling it to you, it's worth more?
Yeah.
So we have to put that in there, right? If it comes back at this or over, we're, it voids our agreement.
The price is for higher than the one seventy, then you renegotiate or you cancel the deal.
Okay.
Pretty hard for an appraisal, when you've got two offers, appraisal, say a willing buyer and a willing seller, and you've got two specific offers that are three hundred thousand dollars, that, that's hard for an appraiser, so it's worth more than that.
Appraiser should go in blind, that's the law.
No, appraiser, well, this was two or three years old, too, but, uh, there's nothing wrong with getting an appraisal, make sure the price is sufficient, update the appraisal or get a new appraisal, so you can set the offer subject to an appraisal that it appraises for that value.
Okay.
Come back to three hundred in the board, we can put that in the counter.
Okay, somebody wanna make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Will y'all press me to order an appraisal?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so, motion.
Okay. So, so let's, let's vote on the other, then we'll do a, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I need a motion to allow county administrator to order an appraisal on the Deverville Police Department building.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, um, I guess you need to read the stuff for an executive session?
Yes, the, the board will recall, we have an immediate matter of litigation involving Shirley Wells versus Harrison County, um, I need to discuss with board that mediation that we had had last week, as far as our executive session.
Mr. Chairman, before we go into executive session, can I make a motion?
Yes, sir. Yes, yes, sir.
First, I'd like to make a motion to spread on the minutes, the resignation of Dr. Thad Carter, he's been serving on the hospital board for several years, and I also thank him for his service, so I'd like to spread that motion.
Second.
And once accepted that motion, I'd like to recommend that we appoint Stephen Simpson on the hospital board to serve, represented by Har, one of the representatives for Harrison County.
Second.
Okay, don't we need to vote on the first thing, first, okay?
The motion.
All in favor on the motion to spread the recognition on the minutes?
Aye.
The resignation.
All right, and then have a motion to a point?
I want Steve Simpson to the Memorial Hospital Board, represent Harrison County.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, Steve is here, if anybody would have any questions I'd like to ask, or Steve, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just thank the board for this privilege of serving on the hospital board, it's a big responsibility, and of course, the board's priorities are patient care and safety and finance, and, and there are a lot of challenges to serve and make sure we provide the best care for the people of Harrison County, so thank you for that, just saying that, and that.
Thank you for being willing to volunteer.
Thank you.
Before we go into executive session.
I won't.
Before, before we go into executive, there's one matter of litigation I think can be discussed in open session, there was an accident involved in a Caleb Sosha, they hit a tractor, a bush hog, operated by Jennifer Ward, it damaged it, the damage to the tractor and the bush hog is about fifty-something thousand dollars, the defendant driver only had twenty-five thousand dollars in property damages limits, uh, they tendered the twenty-five thousand dollars, and the question is, does the board want to accept the twenty-five thousand dollars as opposed to going after the insurer, and the balance would be another twenty-five thousand bucks, you can lose half of your cost, but people usually carry the amount of the insurers they can afford, so trying to chase them above the twenty-five is probably a waste of time, the question is, does the board want to accept the offer of their USAA insurance